This is the voting meeting for February the 27th. Please rise and pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its existence, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Martino, can you call the roll, please?
This is plenty.
Here.
Mr. Kurz.
Here.
Mr. Martino, here. Mr. Lucas O'Neil.
Here.
Mr. Potts.
Here.
Mr. Radkew.
Here.
Mr. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Dowsky.
Here.
Mr. Wolf.
Here.
Okay, under procedures for public participation and the inside of your cover states the procedures. If you would like to address the board, if you haven't already done so, please make sure you sign in the back of the room. If you would like to approach the board to make a presentation, please come to the podium, sign in, state your name and address for the record, and when you begin talking, you'll have three minutes to make your presentation. Under announcements, there will be an executive session following this voting meeting to discuss personnel and legal issues. Are there any other agenda edits besides the ones I have?
Yes, Mr. Wolf. Item 13A, new business, we're striking that. It's been agreed that Mr. Smith will... We're striking this item and discussing it in executive session.
Okay, there are two agenda edits under personnel. Number eight, for C, the Mr. Angle, strike the salary of $2,507 and add salary of $3,706. Then, under 10, facilities, item H, strike that. That will be part of the march, maybe the whole, in voting meeting as planned. If there's no other agenda edits, are there any presentations by the public on agenda items?
How are you all doing tonight? Gary Dunleavy, you did Dowsky. Did we change the public comments at every segment? Did we agree to the public comment now the same as the committee of all? Or is this a typo? Every segment has a public comment?
What's that?
Yeah, every segment does have a public comment.
Yeah, it is a typo, but Wolf, we're gonna honor the agenda.
Okay. Mr. Wolf, that's next. Mr. Wolf, I thought we had a good bit longer agenda edit. PCI, you vote, we need to vote on that tonight, I believe.
Isn't that my thought? That goes on the agenda.
Okay, thanks, David. Thank you.
So we have to vote twice. Once is as a board...
It has to come off the consent agenda.
Okay. So we're gonna pull that to that point. We're gonna pull E off the agenda, I mean, off the consent agenda and move it to its own item.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, you can.
Shane Cockle, 8:30, Gallagher, Delaware. I'm here again to talk a brief minute about this sports program, specifically baseball. And I wanted to let you guys know that George, he was, he's gonna do an excellent job as our athletic director. During our conversation that we had, there was a few things that still kinda bothered me. And when I got home, I don't like sending emails to you, remember? Because it is hard to explain what you're trying to get across. One of the things, and what the board understands why I have, you know, why, this is such a problem for me when it comes up, is because I met George at one board meeting, maybe three minutes, he introduced himself, very nice. But what we were discussing, he brought up, you know, my brother, other baseball players, and he's getting misinformation, and they're pretty much lies, but Mr. McFord sells them as a truth. And I don't think anyone on this board would appreciate, and I would never do it, but out there in the public, telling lies about you guys, the administration, or the board. The problems that my brother has in his home really should be being spread among the administration and the public. I don't know why my brother's name keeps getting brought up, but it's almost slanderous when my concerns that are being brought to everyone's attention is tried to be little by my brother. I think it should be stopped. I don't think anyone should allow it to continue. You know, I'm sure George, when we met, he already had a whole lot of background information, but I really don't know how he came up with it, but I've heard it before, and it's not true, and it's a lie. And because someone is doing something that they shouldn't be doing, they shouldn't be blamed on someone else. With, my brother and I don't have as close a relationship as what everyone says we do. And I'm not out doing this because of my brother or my nephew. There's things that were being done wrong, and that's my point I'm trying to get across. And I think I would appreciate it if you would have a talk with whoever is spreading these rumors, that they should stop. Because I'm sure you wouldn't want people spreading rumors about you guys in order to get their objective through.
Okay. Mr. Cockle, I can tell you that until you just said something about, like, rumors about your brother, that's the first time I heard anything about if there was any part of the story about your brother.
Okay, so we can chop you off if that's right.
But I mean, your point is made. I mean, the issue, the issue should be with the individual that we're talking about. No, you know, the outside forces, the other personalities shouldn't factor into it at all.
Right.
Again, I can honestly say I have no idea what you were referring to, but I'm sure there's some type of history there. I don't need to know. So I think we'll just leave it at that.
Right. But that's why, if you can all understand, because you think I'm beating a dead horse, is because I'm hearing this stuff, and things are happening, and it's really, it's wrong that you should allow someone...
I agree.
...one of your employees to continue doing that.
It's, your point is, your point's taken.
And with the agreement that he made, George didn't even read, didn't even see it, he didn't even really know about it, and he brought John Rayna to the table without even understanding the agreement. And, you know, I have three minutes, or I'll thank you for your extra time, but I would appreciate it if...
We made it, I made it very clear to the administration behind, you know, outside of the public comment, that these two coaches cannot coach any other team, January to December, for the school year in which they're being approved as a coach. So I understand your point, and I reread, I mean, I listened to some of your comments over again, and that's what I, I guess I did miss the first time, is that, you know, our baseball season is maybe different from other, these other, other, you know, clubs, which is really only the Blue Rocks is the only thing we're talking about. The Carpenter Cup is, what I understand, is like an all-star team, that it's really like an honor for these students to be picked, you know...
They're still run by the same organization that you promised not to be a part of, and...
Not to, I don't wanna, you know, go through it again, but I did, I did listen to it, so I understand, but we made it very clear that, you know, in order for them to be a coach, that this is what they do, January to December of 2017, that's all they will do, or they won't be coaching here. I mean, I can't make it any more clear than that.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanna add a little bit to that conversation. Mr. Schmidt has assured me that the consent agenda will not happen under his name, that basically the young kids will not be called hostage to private organizations whereby their starting or playing on a good team will be directly related to their membership in a club, a private club sport, and we're all in the same cage there, and Mr. Schmidt has assured me that won't happen if it happened to him.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, move to the consent items. Do I have a motion for the items listed there as amended?
Motion for item seven is amended. Second.
Motion by Mr. Kurtz, second by Mr. Rathkev. Any board discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Martino? Consent agenda? For the consent?
Voice or vote?
Voice.
All those in favor of seven, eight, or seven, eight, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Motion passes nine, zero.
I would like a motion for seven, E. And we have to, we have to vote on it as a board and then individually. So there actually be two votes, I'm sorry.
Motion for item seven, E.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kurtz, second by Ms. Tardowski. Any board discussion?
Do you want me to read any of this, or...
If.
The Department of State of the Intermedia Unit yearly presents us with our proposed budget. This year it's in the amount of $1.839,160. We have to vote on this twice. Once, we vote individually, but it's the board vote, and then the second vote is individually, and there's a proportion of value of each vote counts times a number three. So we're gonna give them one vote for the board, and it's a whole another vote as individuals. Pardon? Yeah, the 1.8 billion is not all of ours. We're only paying a portion of that.
And that's only part of...
Mr. Kurtz has a question, I can tell.
Yeah. And that's only part of their overall budget, too, I believe.
Very, very small.
Yeah. What is this budget for, Mr. Rathkev? Is this administration's?
The, I think it's nine mandated items that the IU provides to the districts.
All right, so this is like services that we're receiving in part, or we're paying?
Okay. It says mandated school district services.
Okay.
No other questions?
And no other questions, we proceed, Mr. Martino.
All right, this is the board vote, and again, we have to do this by name. Mrs. Bytes?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Kurz?
Yes.
Mr. Martino, yes. Mr. Lucas O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Radkew?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Dowsky?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Motion's nine, zero. Now the individual vote, same procedure. Mrs. Bytes?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Kurz?
Yes.
Mr. Martino, yes.
Mr. Lucas O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Radkew?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Tardowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we'll move to personnel. Do I have a motion?
Motion for item eight is amended.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kurtz, second by Mr. Scott. Any discussion?
Yeah, I would just like to make one comment. I was the one at the last meeting at the Monocacy Elementary telling Mr. Cockle that the past is the past, but Mr. Cockle made a statement that went home with me, and the statement was that we're in the business of not just teaching academics and sports, we're also in the business of teaching honesty and integrity, and that has stuck with me, so for that reason, I'll be voting no, but I just want everybody to know that I cannot include these two coaches based on what Mr. Cockle said.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please, Mr. Martino.
And I'm sorry, I didn't record who made the motion and who seconded it.
That was Mr. Kurtz and Mr. Scott.
Okay. Mr. Martino, no. Mr. Lucas O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Radkew?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Dowsky?
No.
Mrs. Bytes?
No.
Mr. Kurz?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Motion passes six, three.
Okay, moving on. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we'll go to nine programs.
Motion for number nine.
Both A and B?
Yeah. Second.
Motion by Mr. Kurtz, second by Mr. Lucas O'Neil. Any board discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Martino, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Lucas O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Radkew?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Dowsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Bytes?
No.
Mr. Kurz?
Yes.
Mr. Martino, yes. Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Motion passes eight, one.
Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we'll move to ten, facilities. It's amended.
Motion for item ten is amended.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kurtz, second by Ms. Tardowski. Board discussion?
I have one comment.
So just, I know a couple are familiar with item C for the sidewalk replacement. I know we have a quote for replacement, I just wanted to let other members know. I did see that another contractor that I knew to look at that, and I was a little, you know, I don't know if my concrete, so I was... So the person I had come out, they don't actually replace concrete, they restore. So if you have hidden concrete, they'll, you know, they can, they can do it. They also will, in this case, our, told our, our walkway over there has sunk, so they tried to, you know, jackhammer it, place it. They do a process that they call slap jacking, which is actually, they go all, get down in there, inject, pull that, pull that slab up, which would most likely be cheaper, but this sounds like, so they could come in through sections, but from what I'm gathering, that the high school, that the old front there has kind of, so might be, and they could give us a quote because they wanted to come in through a sample, to actually see how much product it would take to raise that, and they could give a firm quote until they came out to do it, and see how one of the slabs would react. So I think going forward, though, if we have certain areas, they, instead of removing and replacing, they could probably...
That is, I think, over at Monocacy, that was the plan, to drill some cores in there and see how they lift up?
So I think that'd be a good contractor to do that, save some money, and instead cover the places. He said the high school concrete is actually good concrete. He said it's in good shape, it's a sucker. And he said the new concrete actually that you're getting, he said with salt, it's pending within like a couple of years. He said if we didn't get the concrete, we should definitely seal it to prevent it. But I'm not, that salt that the CCA is putting down here is pretty sedental, so we probably have to make sure that the...
Yeah, they're also digging out the pier foundations from the, there used to be a roof that went the full length over there, and the piers are still there where the footings, so those have to be dug out, and those are, they're digging those out where they're doing it. And Mr. Blankenbiller did, did say, he wasn't recommending that the concrete from the sidewalk to the building be replaced, because he thought it was good enough as it is, so... Yeah, I think that, I don't think we heard anything on how that process went with the Monocacy. I think they were gonna try a sample over there, see how, it's the same thing, where they drill a hole in, and then inject something and lift it up instead of replacing it.
I'm with Mr. Rathkev in not knowing exactly how concrete works and all that, but looking at that number for just the front of the high school, it seems to be a lie. How much does that reach? That amount?
Well, they're gonna be letting class go in there, but have to check out the whole , have to get it out, and then find out what, I mean, that adds probably new base to it, because that's probably why it sank something after the base.
Okay. But I just never appreciated how expensive concrete is.
One other comment. I don't wanna hold on to anything to do with facilities, we need to sort them, but I do wanna comment that here we are again, moving to approved acceptance of equipment that's already been delivered. I think we need to start controlling it better where the voting before's made happen.
Have a comment?
We did have discussion on that in the policy committees this afternoon, and we're gonna start getting notifications of all grant applications on the, as part of the regular mayoral agenda, right? Is that what we decided? So things like this, which I'm assuming was, is that from a grant or something? Was that just a donation? So maybe we should...
No, the grants that we discussed is different than a donation.
It's just a straight-out donation?
Right, and there was a time limit on this donation. So like I said earlier in the policy meeting, at times, the board meetings don't coincide with other people's schedules, and if we were going to receive it, the equipment was donated and paid for by a grant. So nothing came out of our general fund or anything to pay for the delivery of it, it came through a grant that we already had in place. But moving forward, any grant that is requested will go before the board for approval.
And Mr. Wolf, can we pull item I out for an individual?
So you would like the amend? All right, well, we got the, Mr. Kurtz?
I'm fine with that.
Yes.
And who is the second?
Mr. Tardowski.
Mr. Tardowski?
So the motion is amended, then it is...
A through, A through G.
Correct.
Ten, A through G. If there's no more board discussion, roll call vote, please, Mr. Martino.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Radkew?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Dowsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Bytes?
Yes.
Mr. Kurz?
Yes.
Mr. Martino, yes. Mr. Lucas O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Motion passes nine, zero.
Then we're gonna move ten, I.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kurtz, second by Ms. Bytes.
I just wanna say that I don't think we should be thinking about closing a building until we reevaluate it exactly district-wide, which is the building we should be considering closing. I'm not so sure it's worth going on that here anymore.
Any other discussion?
I just wanna comment on what Mrs. Bytes said, the, with your advertising as a public hearing to, not close the building, to discuss closing the building, and as a public hearing, then 90 days later, we have for the public has time to weigh in, if we will make a determination of whether to close it or not. I also think, and I understand, that the restructuring is not complete, but it's also like a moot point, since there's no longer a third grade at BDC to become fourth grade. So next year, you'll have only a fifth grade in BDC, and then when they move into sixth grade, you're being over there.
Well, my thinking, my thinking is that maybe we would wanna consider moving all the students from another building into Burden Row Elementary and closing that building. I don't think, I agree with Mr. Dershowitz who brought it up a couple of weeks ago, that that idea has not even been considered by this board. I think this is the time that we should be doing it. Sure, we're moving the kids out, but once we close the building, we're saying we're not putting kids back in. We should continually phase out and move the kids out, but then we should evaluate the district holistically and say, well, maybe that isn't the building to close, this will be capacity again, maybe it's Monocacy or elementary, or another one. This board has never considered closing a building other than Burden Row Elementary. I just don't think, I think we do, we probably get the service for that. Okay, we're moving kids out, but once we make the move to start to knock them back, we tie our hands, and we started down the path that we're technically responsible for we haven't considered any other building.
Do you wanna talk about the space considerations? Controversy between the two? We can do that later? Okay. Is there any other board discussion? Roll call vote, please, Mr. Martino.
Mr. Radkew?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Dowsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Bytes?
No.
Mr. Kurz?
Yes.
Mr. Martino, yes. Mr. Lucas O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Motion passes eight, one.
Is there any public comment on ten? Seeing none, we'll move to personnel.
Motion for item eleven?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kurtz, second by Mr. Lucas O'Neil. Board discussion?
How about the motion eleven is amended? Oh, never mind.
No, it's not amended.
Well, it's one of the clean ones.
That heading, though. Sorry, I'm hearing this issue here. Why do we have personnel under two sections?
What's that?
One was consent, and one was the new item added after what was already done.
You don't have to say that? Say that, cool.
The first section is consent, which is everything you've already seen on the cowl, and then the second section is everything that's been since then that needs to get approved, right? The additional items.
Okay, so that really, item E should be under item seven, and seven is the consent agenda. But E is titled personnel, so the section, you see that there? Page two?
Because it was a personnel section of the consent agenda.
But then it should be item...
We didn't do it with the consent agenda, because it's a separate...
No, it's a separate section.
Did you?
Because it should then be...
I don't think it...
It doesn't matter.
Production of consent.
Okay, there's still like this table there, and a motion for item eleven.
The same, I think, Mr. Kurtz, is getting at it, if the personnel items had been discussed under consent, then that would have to be separated, it could all just be under consent agenda.
Right, because item seven is consent. Right, because item seven is consent.
Yeah.
And this was item eight.
Right.
Okay. Get that, get that cleaned up for, for next time.
I have a question. Under C2, extra curriculum, I'm not familiar with DBYDA. Could you link that one?
Is that the yearbook?
I don't know that it should be DBYDA, but I do know it's.
No, it's, so I, I can speak to this. It stands for Daniel Booth Youth Education Association, I believe. And it's a separate club. I know they put on different events, like Susan Gold, but perhaps Mr. McKnight.
You're correct. They do put on Susan Gold, which is, now it stands for a, a youth association. They do outreach type programming, you know, get involved in, they go down to Birdsboro with a vacation for Earth Day, or just park down there. That, advisorship has been, vacancy has started, it's stepped down about two years ago. And this former, students kind of, it's supposed to get back involved and really the, the big project is Susan Gold, which raises around $2,000.
Okay. There's no other board discussion? Roll call vote please, Mr. Martino.
Personnel, Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Dowsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Spites.
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz.
Yes.
Mr. Martino, yes.
Mr. Ocaso Neill.
Yes.
Mr. Potts.
Yes.
Mr. Raskin.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll move to old business. Do I have a motion for any of the items listed there?
I'll make a.
The first three items?
For item 12, first three bullet points?
Yeah.
Twelve, A, one, two, three.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Kurtz, second by Ms. Dowsky, for the first three items.
Mr. Kurtz get a bonus or make every motion?
Not yet, we haven't adjourned yet.
Any board discussion? Voice vote please, Mr. Martino.
First three items are all past minutes. All voters in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion passes nine zero.
It's outside the room, maybe they call a motion.
Is there any public, or, let me see, um, news cost, newsletter cost, Mr. Harris.
Okay, we have, I sent out the final draft of the newsletter today, this morning, because you should have all received it with the cost attached. The current cost to print the newsletter is thirty nine, $3,974 with current mailing costs at $2,045, which comes to about $5,900. That's well below what it was prior. Any questions? You can look at the draft.
Did you send out the new one? I saw the pop.
Yeah, I saw the.
It's in my email, it's another, there's two attachments to the email, a weekly update and then the draft.
Ah, see, I'm used to getting the, the two different.
The PowerPoint, the PowerPoint.
That's for board members who do not have PowerPoint, I send it out in PDF. You don't open my emails.
Mr. Harrison, who got the cost of postage?
Uh, Lisa, Piki, out of the business office.
Now, I retired 13 years ago in the postal service, so rates have changed and stuff. I still think 29 cents is too high. I think that could be lower.
It's all those retirement pay they're paying.
I think it cost, I had, I don't deserve, I must say, but.
It'd be going out to 7,051 families, so.
Yeah, so now that nonprofit to personal customer local without addressing and stuff, I think 29 cents is too high of a rate.
Do you have any contacts?
I, I made a phone call today, I didn't get a response yet, but I would hold off just a day or two.
All right, we'll keep checking.
Mr. Harrison, I, I saw on Zillow, I thought we had 13,000 households in the district. Was it, don't you, for some reason, or was it?
Well, taxpayer addresses.
Taxpayer addresses?
Right.
Right from the business office? 7,051?
7,051, yes.
Okay, next item, one to one update, Mr. McKnight.
I'm used to be receiving, I think, last Thursday, PDF of the project charter, number one to one. Also, I think Mr. Harris has a copy or anybody a hard copy. The project charter, the answers are can't answer both questions that you had. We have this point.
Mr. Repd, can you pass Mr. McKnight a microphone, please?
Okay. So the project charter before you, the something that we've worked on for a long time, going back to Mr., Mr. Hurley, myself, Mr. Matt and Mrs. Spite, we worked, after teachers to visit that spring, starting getting involved through the fall. So the issue bringing it forward to the board, really, it had to go through development and a lot of research to make sure it's ready for you guys to consume. Sent to Mr. Harris on Tuesday, he previewed the final version, I think it's going to get to you on Thursday, I think most of you got a PDF copy on Thursday. I have a hard copy for you right now. You'll see a whole host of issues and topics that are addressed, which I think are many questions that you have, even down to the issue, where is the money coming from, how do we finance it, and what's that, that look like? So that was interdepartmental relationship, the business department, well, the technology department, and then curriculum folks, and then, of course, the administration at the high school. We think it's at the point where you can have many of your questions answered. I know there's a lot of discussion back and forth on the email line about whether should we Google Chrome or should we use another device? And I just, whatever device we choose, the genesis of having vibe here started with two questions at the high school. And that was, it had nothing to do with really technology, it had to do with instructional material that are extraordinarily outdated at the high school, followed up by materials that we cannot even find in the secondary block to replace. So the question then always on our team is, can technology help us solve some of these issues? And the answer was yes, and that's how we went down this path. And most very short is that, the, where we landed on the iPad versus the Chrome is that iPad and Apple offer instructional materials and many of them are free, not all of them are free. Because when I say free, they're really built into the cost of, of the purchase, because iPad purchased a number of copylefts. So they're in the iTunes University, they're in the iBookstore, they're in the iTunesU, they're in iTunes. And we've shown you those at curriculum rooms and some other areas. Where we go from here is kind of up to a board discretion. Now, if we get ring rated, then we need to use the teaching staff about designing courses, getting them professional development, which is, there's a seven phase professional development plan in there that you can review. So it's about a two-year rollout, I think, to, to we're fully up and running and we're going to graduate where students are maximizing, where they're building current instructional materials for all levels of departments at the high school, every student, every teacher. That, that is the concept that we're really proposing.
And the, the biggest change would be a one-year reprieve on this, where we would train staff for one year, teachers, on how to use the equipment, PD would be involved. And then the following year, we would implement with students. So that teachers aren't given something and said, go ahead, do it. We would train teachers for one year, one year PD, and then the following, start of the next school year, we would bring students on board.
So when would you need to know, just to begin that process, what, what is the deadline for, for us to take action to make you aware of our decision to move forward with the?
Well, the deadline's the same, because if not, we have to order textbooks and we have to get into textbook ordering mode. So, guys, the deadline was, should be in there, March? No.
Not able to get on the microphone, but part of it has to do with Mr. Matt, and what he needs to do is roll out, like getting it in teachers' hands, the number of computer, or iPads we're going to get in their hands, devices. And then to begin, the implementation will be, if you have the teachers phased in, we'll begin in this spring. We could, probably difficult now, let Scott speak, what his, you know, run-up time would be, but we'd love to be able to have the Apple team come in, we get to train the teachers. It would be phenomenal, because March 17th is not what I did in states, probably April 12th, or we would have to push it to next year, and that would move, you know, move it up. That's what.
I don't know, I'd like to do a understanding here, if I am, please correct me, so we will not be getting these, if we were to move, let's say tonight, we were to approve this entire project, so tonight, we will approve it, it would not, the machines won't be in students' hands until a year after the original proposed date, right?
They were gonna roll it out in the, if I remember, the second quarter of this school, of, say, the 2017, 18 school year? So now would be, the students would have it in their hands for the 2018, 19 school year.
Right. So I'm still trying to understand the urgency here, then, if originally the teachers are going to have it in their hands, what was that, half a year early, roughly? Why are we now still holding that timeline, we're not going to see deployment among the student body for a year out?
Well, if we're not going to do it, we need to order textbooks.
Right.
So we would have to do that, and if not, the sooner we can get them into teachers' hands and get them trained and get the Apple team.
So textbooks is driving this, it's not necessarily the deadline related to the technology, it's the need for textbooks, sort of a need for instructional material.
Right.
Okay.
Structural material, just like Preston said.
It also is that the more lead time we can give our staff, the more time they can have tools, the more time they can develop courses, the better it's going to be once teachers take it to students. The longer we, for the shorter time we give them money, the longer it.
Yeah, I'm personally, I'm happy for the delay. I thought the second quarter was a little aggressive, seeing that, you know, we, there's a lot of curriculum, I'm sure would have to be polished up, you know, to support this and in collaboration with the, with the, with the teachers. So I think it would be, that, that gives every, I'm sure you're gonna be rolling this out maybe at the end of the school year, more aggressively to stress the, the building, see how the, the infrastructure is actually able to handle the influx. So I, I think, you know, testing it over a course of a year and rolling it out, getting the training for the teachers is, is a better, because we don't want to, we don't want to, you know, fall at the finish line that some of our other districts have with how they rolled it out unsuccessfully.
Question, you're looking at the measurements on the PNTSA mission goals and measurement development. I still have an answer really to my question about how we're going to measure academic development. A lot of the measurements are kind of self, self-referential in how they're referring back to devices themselves. Device usage, that's going to be a measurement of success. Count of devices and use by underrepresented populations, that's going to be a measurement of success. How do I know, how is this going to help our students academically? Not how, not whether we program, we're getting iPads in every, in students' hands, as I can. I'm still interested in hearing the solid academic benefits that are going to come. Does it understand how it's, like, your frequency of which students engage a broader learning community? That sounds good to me, I have no objection to that. I'd like something a little bit more, more invested as just going for phased textbooks. Be a little bit more, what kind of, why is it superior to textbooks academically? And not just a new flash sheet.
Well, well, that has been said from day one, that our, our materials are, just like our microphones are outdated. So they're always going to have the newer material in their hand and the information is going to be relevant. One of the issues at the, the high school is not having adequate material. So this will always be updated material for use. So that's how it's going to be better for educating students. It's not just a new flashy tool, like these devices aren't the all, in all to be all, but the information and part of Apple's support is that the information is always going to be current, which we don't have right now.
Mr. McKnight, bear with me, because I have like five or six questions. One of which revolves around textbooks. I thought we were in a state of urgency to get this approved now, because our textbooks for next year were inadequate.
That's true.
Well, what are we gonna do next year?
Well, we continue as we have for the past 15 years in an inadequate model, so we're gonna kick it forward another year and pull us that money, this is what we're.
So how many iPads are we getting now that we don't, we don't need all of them?
I think we're looking at 60.
About 60, 70 basically covering the back one, I thought we were.
And, and then we have a written proposal from Apple supporting all this.
They will be revising it for the lower quantity. Originally, the proposal was for the entire high school, we had to get back to them.
Does, does the price change?
The per-device cost does not, obviously your total.
Not sort of in that, the per-device cost.
Yeah, the per-device cost will remain the same.
At the, after the agenda meeting, Mr. Hurley, Mr. Harris, Mr. Small and I talked to a Chester County School District that went into iPads. They determined to go into just ninth grade and let, let the iPad grow with the student through 10th, and then next year they would have two grades, the following year three grades. And I understand this model's been used in other places. You don't think that's a better model, or you're just gonna jump into it all four grades?
I think when you, this school, you're talking about Great Valley, which is one of the more elite schools in terms of funding in the state. They have, they already have appropriate material. You mean textbooks? The iPad device for them is an add-on, giving them an answer to what they have. That is not our situation. And, you know, as we had, I think, conversations before, I'm not particularly married to either kind of device, it's just this one meets our needs and the appropriate, or at least current, instructional materials for everybody. And so even though we're pushing this out one more year, back to your original question, if we rolled into ninth grade, that would be several groups, we would just be saying, well, that's the way it goes, we're not getting it, and it's gonna roll off at ninth grade and moving forward. So we're sacrificing two or three more years of students not having the most current, you know, opportunity for instructional materials.
Two, two questions from Mr. Matt. One of the things Great Valley said was they, they had a problem with their infrastructure. Now, Mr. Harris tells me that our infrastructure has been upgraded to the point where it can absorb all four grades doing this.
Yeah, correct. We're coming into this later in the game, another district, so we're fortunate enough to know exactly how to build out Monocacy. Learning as we go, sharing some of the other districts that are ahead of us. So yes, we will have everything in place. We're actively deploying new curriculum upgrades as we see them in the high school. So we will be in a solid foundation for that.
Another thing they mentioned was kids coming to school without the device being charged, or the charge running down, being used all day. Well, we have sufficient charging stations available.
Yeah, so one of the plans is, we have a number of open labs in the high school currently. Once every student has it qualified, those labs are no longer necessary, so we will repurpose them for charging areas. They have a large number of outlets in them, just because they're computer labs as well, so they're easily diverted, they're open spaces. You know, and similar to what was referenced in the, the document, I mean, there will be some level of expectation as well for the students to be prepared for class, but the program design, yes, that that has been a topic of conversation, so we have locations for those students to go to.
Okay, one last question, and I'm glad Mr. Schmidt's here because this would like rest right into athletics too, but we were talking about a fee. Is there still a plan for a fee?
So there would be an optional insurance, is what we will offer. It will not be amended, it will be an option that parents could participate in, if there's a accidental damage or something like that to the device. It will be a tiered setup, it will be our recommendation as far as pre-introduced students are concerned. But again, it would be optional, and if a student does not participate in the insurance program and damages that's occurred to the device, they'll be on the, on the, for the full cost of the repair. However, if they participate in that insurance program, that would, similar to your home or your car insurance, that would help cover the cost of that repair.
But, the recommendation would not be, would be a mandatory fee for that.
And that sort of leads into my segue to athletics too, and I'm glad Mr. Subers is here. I started reading our policies regarding free and reduced lunch. I don't see anything that says that applies to anything other than free and reduced lunch. Is there something in the law that says you get free and reduced insurance, free and reduced activity fees? Is there anything like that as part of the law?
Not, not specifically. The, it's used as a measurement for determining who would need that support. And it's a, you know, it's an existing mechanism that's in place to allow for support for students who cannot otherwise to participate in whatever activity or service of fees being requested. So no, there's no requirement for it, but when, you know, I would say the overwhelming majority is of school, majority of school districts who had imposed fees for participation in actual curricular activities. In doing so, they do not want to include participation of students who could not afford to pay the fee. And they use that guideline for you to reduce lunch as the criteria, you know, create this criteria that's readily applicable that could be used to determine who would not be required to pay that particular fee.
Well, what I'm getting at, Mr. Subers, and going back to when before it was on the board, and I knew they were using that as a criteria for activity fees. I don't know how many people are making use of that, but my question is, should we not then have that built into our policy? Should there not be something in official school policy that says we're going to use that for that purpose?
It would be, that certainly would be an option. And if, again, it should be written into a guideline, at least for your position of the fee, so that it is, is, you know, written established, criteria. So either by policy or guideline, yes, and recommended these to be, with respect to the imposition of whatever fee you're, you know, whatever fee you may be.
And Mr. Scott, I agree with this issue, because I talked to two people who previously were on the policy committee, and none of, neither of them are aware that we ever had this in writing anymore.
A place where it may be, particularly as it relates to the activity fees and the resolution approved at that date. So there would be a on-the-record or vote at least in that, or, I mean, that's where I look.
Yeah, I would anticipate, I would have anticipated that it wasn't included in the working board action, proposing the fee. Wouldn't hurt to have it in the guideline or policies, but I can locate the, 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 with respect to the, to provide that information to the board.
While we're on the fee topic, I don't know who had a chance to look at it, did come across that one policy, I forget what district it was, but I thought it was interesting that, Mr. Matt, I think they charged a, a technology fee across the board, except again for, I think, free and reduced, if the student wanted to take the device home. Because they kept the device at the school, that fee was not charged. I think they used that money to offset the free and reduced, they were, and then they had, they did have a fee schedule for damage. They had a set fee for certain damage, I thought that was kind of interesting, and maybe wasn't right about student access, they weren't right about charging. It was to be charged at night, but that they wanted to take it home, they were charging that fee.
Yeah, I, I have a concern hearing that insurance won't be required for these devices, just thinking, the students, when we adopt this, every student will have to have the iPad, and they'll have to use it, there won't be textbooks. Every student's going to have to use one of these devices, appearing or to choose not to purchase insurance. And we are requiring students to use these devices. I don't know, I mean, for, for something to happen, maybe because if you make students fault, they get brand damages to the device, and then the families, would we be charging the full price of the iPad, or would we be charging our discount price? Like eight hundred dollars, or three hundred dollars?
We would charge back costs for the district, so what we pay them is going to be great. Yeah, it's important to, as we have these discussions just in line, sometimes to separate the technology and the alphabet, so we view this similar to a textbook or any other obligation. So if this student were to damage a textbook, obviously they'd be on, on the book for that repair cost as well. So we're trying to keep it in line.
My point there, I wonder, as some of you have gone through, and you've seen some of the terrible textbooks we have at night school, I don't know if we really, of course, if we refine the book, I mean, there's where, there happens to be regularly assessed values, and what cost do we charge them, surely isn't the whole cost of textbooks?
Yeah, absolutely.
Do they go all textbooks?
Yeah. It's replacement code, so what would cost the secondary market for us to replace it, so it's charged, that's correct.
And families don't object to paying five dollars, would you walk away, or are you just saying for the?
But, but let me, let me share with you what happens. So, so as students go through the process, the last thing is, you know, graduation. And we have people lined up at, before graduation, paying a significant amount of money to clear their obligations for whatever folks or damages were occurring. And in many cases, super steep, plus many cases.
What is, what is the cost, approximately, what's the cost of the insurance?
So we're just like, maybe at approximately thirty-five dollars a year.
Thank you.
And the other thing I was, I think, Mr. Knight said he didn't care what it was from, or iPad. I think the reason we wrote iPad was, was the nature of, of, because of the text.
That's correct.
Was the issue. I know the one downside that I seem to come across every, every week, it froze in Chromebook, was that you had a keyboard, so that you could do papers and take notes, and whereas, yeah, that certainly has a keyboard in it, the virtual keyboard certainly was not as robust or.
And the folks who went to strength theory, Mrs. Weiss and Mr. Kurtz, Mr. Palmer, the English teacher, asked that, because people who posed had that question. And I'm not sure if they were both in the English class that had questions to ask. But, almost unanimous, kids said, we don't use the keyboard. And the teacher expressed was that two students, in her times, within about four years, wanted the keyboard, and they got it, they wanted the keyboard.
So, so that's not easy as far as that is.
That's just what they said, so that's one sample, if there's only one place, there are many places to have that conversation, but that's what.
Mr. Rafferty, I just triggered another question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
They bring you some of them to do their homework, correct?
Oh, Mr. Smith, somebody.
What if they don't have Wi-Fi, what do they do?
That's a great question, so Mr. Matt, can you talk to some of that schools he does that helps with that issue?
Yeah, so the applications we use in the high school can have content downloaded prior to meeting the building, so it's available offline. So that was one of the other considerations when we were looking at the iPad, and it had an offline component to it for those situations. One of the other things we'll do that on the district, as I've done, is publish areas that have free Wi-Fi. I mean, it's almost like it has to be Wi-Fi, but we tried to design it so there is not a requirement for that Wi-Fi connection.
How much memory will all the iPads that you are looking at have?
We will do the base models, so that's thirty-two gig.
So would, would then, would our students have, do they get like Apple Cloud, if they'll need to store stuff, or is that?
It would be Google Apps, we might, yeah, so we'll have a Google app.
So, and, I was trying to recall, last year or this year, we improved the cost per student for, I think, the Microsoft application suite. Is that, would that, is that going to be able to use the Microsoft Chromebook and all that on, and is that licensed?
They, they could, we could use the Google Apps for students from a, as a learning curve perspective. But that's still, those application desks would be available to students as well, I think, download Microsoft Word.
And they could use that on the Apple app?
Yep.
I think, um, just on the district that, that just recommended some out, that had a technology fee, they actually had something on their frequently asked questions that, I guess their area was Comcast, but Comcast offers, often free for our use, or free internet for people, for kids, these families qualify for the lunch program. I, I don't know if service elected or mainstream would do that in our area, but it might not be bad to reach out and ask that question, so that we could do that information, if they would apply.
I appreciate the project order, I do have a few more questions, so. So are all the costs measured in here, would we have any subscriptions that we would still have to add to this? Like iTunes University, sort of cost for that?
So I think that in particular is a free service.
Do we anticipate any upfront that we would have to subscribe to, or do any of our existing ones go away, like schoolology?
Schoolology would still remain, because that would be the primary, as far as the information to the students. As far as the systems, subscriptions, off the top of my head, I can't think of any, but that goes a little bit beyond as far as curriculum. I want to say most of them will still be in use, I simply don't say archmetaphor, but students will be able to access.
Well, I think we pay thirteen thousand dollars a year for that discovery education, do we need that anymore?
So discovery education we receive through the IU, so that's a county-wide thing that's built into, probably what the district might as far as the IU's operating, about the discovery education. That would be a contract, correct?
So, can you, can you take a moment down that? There has been no discussion yet, so it's possible we might have some savings there, on the play?
I don't want to say.
Okay, Act Forty-Eight credits, would, would the teachers be able to get Apple training, or, you know, help developing new course curriculum through using their Act, their Act Forty-Eight credits, with that qualify?
Yeah, that would, that would, we lined up their strategic plan, so yes, we would be offering Act Forty-Eight hours as a district. So we had to be specific, until we actually designed the training itself, and then that all went along with our holes and stuff, but I'm quite confident.
On the content distribution, if our students are going to be using the Google Drive for all three states, they're going to have to have a Google Suite-enabled email address, correct? So we're going to issue all our students down to going to email addresses?
For a fair use.
Okay, could that also be used for content distribution? What if we go pay for this, by doing this?
So that's basically, so we'll handle that as far as distributing, or, that's where they import content. But yeah, you have to, it's still.
I'm not, I mean, do we know, this is a, I've, oh, we're giving you, you don't have this number off the top of your head, but how much will we expect to pay for? Because I'm thinking there are future savings there, we're thinking about, but, all right.
Another question, from the, from the breakage, and I guess you might have existing policy on this, but would if they don't think they're paying for the broken book, or in this case, the broken iPad, is there a policy that holds up to graduation?
No diploma, maybe.
No diploma, that's what Mr. McKnight said, that at the end of the year, they line up for diplomas, so.
Okay, so I guess that, so would.
So any fees, if you had like an overdue book, and if you've got a parking violation or anything like that?
There are some. Okay, I don't know, are there any, I know we have a lot of teaching coaches, using the wrong words, we have department heads or teaching outdoors, are we going to need a new, you know, position among the teachers for, you know, Apple integration or anything? Is that anticipated, will the union want another?
Could they have an Apple Genius, do they have an Apple Genius?
The Geniuses can be students, are we okay with the union, or are they going to want more?
They always want more, just like, just like Preston wants more.
Have they figured us on that, are you okay?
Well, we, we discussed.
Trying to unvary all the hidden costs.
With the union, we, well, there's no hidden costs.
I mean, undisclosed costs, I mean, I'm sorry.
Well, every, every cost that we could find or think of i- is, has been put out there. We're taking a year, just like the Great Valley person we talked to said, he wished his district did it the way we're doing it, by taking a year, giving teachers development, and letting them learn it. He said the worst thing that happened was students would have questions and turn to the teachers, and the teachers didn't know, because they just got it a few weeks themselves, and that's not fair for the teachers. So what we're doing is, and I did something like this when I was teaching, in Canvas, where you have things online, you're unsure about how to grade, how to test, how to do various things, until you go live. So there's a practice speed, and then there's a game speed. And it's not fair to give the teachers, okay, you have two classes, which he basically said they had, and said, okay, go use it, and the kids were asking questions, and the teachers felt, well, I, I don't know. So we're giving them a whole year to make mistakes, to play with it, to learn it, to play around with it, and they're still going to have questions once the class starts. At least they're, it's been in their hands for a year, they're comfortable with it. And then the cost, we'll have to look at it as we, as we build the program. But right now, a lot of the material, there's no charge. We went with the iPads because of Apple's support. The Chromebooks is more just a door to get to the Internet, where, where the Apple, the iPad, has a whole host of support with it.
And we have identified people within the administration, within the district, to go to for training, so I appreciate that.
Yes, though.
Sort of our integration.
All that's in there. And also, our network internally is set up better to support the iPad than the Chromebook. We were already set up that way. So, a lot of research has been done for this, we just didn't show up one day with an iPad, say this.
And there's certainly, there still will be some of the purchases next year.
Yes.
That would, we would have had, just some of the.
AP geography and exam. Right. But doing it this way, a year out, will give us more time to build the library and to get the right resources in place for the staff, not just say, okay, go find something.
The timetable, that changes.
Right.
I think that's a great point, thank you for bringing it to us this morning.
Mr. McKnight, thank you and your team for your, your hard work on that. Is there any public presentations?
Mr. Wolf, Mr. Small asked me to comment on the status of transportation contract. The transportation contract has been presented to the contractors at the end of January, approximately a week or so ago, they reached out with respect to their comments to the contractor as we made that. I just wanted to point out, and, and the process will be that the revised contract will be submitted to the transportation committee, will be approved by the transportation committee, and then recommended to the board, if we're only. As I'm old, the attendings at that meeting, I just wanted to briefly point out some of the revisions, or actually all the revisions already made to the document, and addressing concerns and questions that we have. And I apologize, hence me, the revised contract in the administration, the board doesn't have. So if anyone has any follow-up questions, once you have the actual document in hand, please feel free to contact me. But the revisions that were made to the contract as presented are as follows. One of the requirements we had in the original RFP was that all of the vehicles used under our contract, we had two-way, yeah, two-way GPS-capable radios. And the contractor currently has two-way radios and a, and a GPS, and a separate GPS system for all of their vehicles. And they requested that we allow that, you know, separate, you know, handled such arrangement, we allow, rather than four-seven to go out and carry expensive, very long lead, like even buying system. Also, with respect to the, the digital video recorders that the contractor is required to add, we had a provision that the, neither the contractor nor any third party would be permitted to view the digital recordings. Contractor uses and is required to use the visual recordings in safety training and personnel training as part of their insurance program. So we're allowing the contractor to use it for those purposes, and view the recordings, but no third party can view the recordings without a court order in the district's permission. Another change was with respect to the payment, processing of payments. I originally inserted a provision whereby, in essence, we had forty-five days to pay invoices. They would have to submit an invoice by the fifteenth of that day of the month, for the prior month, and our payment. of the month, so that in case it was a late business meeting that month, that you have those extra few days. But Mr. Small agrees that that's enough time for us to process payments, and it's pretty consistent with what we're doing now. The other requested revision, actually the final requested revision deals with, we require, in the contract, a provision of contract, which requires the contractors to adhere to all government mandates, including any future enacted mandates. And they were concerned about, you know, committing themselves to some unknown mandate. And what they requested enacted was that if any changes, if future revisions or changes or amendments to the government mandates cause the contractors' operating costs to increase by greater than ten percent over a twelve-month period, that they, we would sit down and try to negotiate the modification to be able to address that circumstance. If we weren't able to negotiate an acceptable arrangement, they would be permitted to terminate the contract with ninety days being notice. So there are revisions, I reviewed them with Mr. Small, he was in agreement with the provisions. Mr. Small did raise an issue regarding the fact that these pursuant to the common law, the governor's proposed budget, that the debate and adoption, it's also the use for transportation, and the impact on future contracts, and viability of future contracts. We do have a termination for convenience provision in the contract, so you could terminate, even though it's a five-year contract, we have the option to terminate that contract early. If circumstances change and due to whatever reasons, the contract is no longer in our domain for the district. So let's see, summary of the changes, the contractors in full agreement with the document that is in the administration's hands, I'm sure that, as I said, it's under the approval by the transportation committee, that's meant to, if anyone has any questions, please feel free to contact.
Well, in a discussion with Mr. Small there tonight, he had mentioned that they had also asked for a reprieve on the archiving of the video, of the audio.
I'm sorry, there was one other, I missed that one. The current arrangement is they have the ability, the current recorders have the ability to maintain the up to four or five days' worth of transportation based on the length of the trip. If a longer trip are maybe four days, and shorter trips, five days. We, again, had our proposal that they could store those, store those video recordings for these thirty days. What they're asking is that they be able to continue to use their present equipment, and then if, as they replace and require new equipment, all new equipment would have the thirty days.
But typically, if we have an issue on a bus, and we have some principals and vice principals here, you, you probably, they're going to probably pull, ask for that video the next day, or two days at the most.
Yeah, it's a situation that we would be learning to run away. The contractors require the transportation contractors to notify us of any incident by the next business day, so we would know, you know, of any incident by the next business day, and add a few more days to contact, to request that recorder. Obviously, if you tell them to preserve it, before you will be able to preserve that recorder.
I have a question about the process. Is it typical to handle revisions after the contract has been approved?
The contract was approved subject to solicitor, and the reason that we had done it is that there was some pressure from the contractors, because they were required to make substantial investment in new equipment in vehicles, and they wanted some assurance that they weren't going to be buying vehicles that they were not going to be able to use. So as a combination to that need, the district had approved the contract subject to solicitor review. So theoretically, I could be making these revisions without running this by you, because I was framing that thought, but I would rather have you know what the changes that are being made are. And that's, and, you know, to be honest with you, that's not my preferred way to do it, but for the cause of the need for the contractors to, again, expense substantial amounts of money to update their fleet, they really felt they needed some assurances that they had a contract in place, and that's why we're doing this. And these revisions, again, within the overall scheme of things, they're relative to our revisions. And again, and the review with the administration, would be acceptable by the administration? Does that answer your question?
Well, I'm just curious, because I know that there weren't a lot of people, contractors responded to our RFP, original proposal. I was just wondering if those changes were in the original proposal, would we have had more bids?
That's a valid question, but we can only see two proposals, and, you know.
You think these are different?
These would not be the difference. There's a few sites to choose between that and the other.
Thank you, Mr. Subers. Any other board questions?
Back to the old business on the one-to-one update. What are, for the board, what are our next steps? What would you like to say?
Yeah, I think, I think we put on the COW for March, and then vote on it.
The teacher-only number and the revised number, so.
Right.
With licenses, and it'd be nice if we had, you know, some detail as it becomes available
for the insurance, and how we're going to handle the free and reduced folks, and just some of the policy, I think, questions that I'm hearing, you know, how is it going to work, charging stations, how are we going to handle people, leave them at home, dead?
Okay, so this would be for the COW at eight, the meeting's at eight, you say? Okay.
Well, that's a good segue into my, my next, next, next month, we're going to have our March committee the whole at, at Amity. So I'm going to ask to intrude on the CNI committee and the policy, no, I'm sorry, the facilities committee, if we could wrap it up at seven. If we could, if we could do that, wrap your committees up at seven, so that the tour can begin at seven o'clock, and then we can begin our meeting on time at seven-thirty.
I thought CNI was in the committee hall.
No, we switched. Now we are in between the CNI voting.
No, our issue is, we have, not issue, we have the extracurricular at five fifteen, and the facility at six fifteen. So, policies still meet on, are they still meet on?
They meet, they met tonight.
Or the voting, maybe.
Yeah.
We might have to, depending on how that goes, we might have to look at.
Another night.
Another night. But I know GCA's coming to our meeting, so we'll probably concentrate on maybe talking to them, if we have any.
Because they can't wrap up model earlier.
That's fine, too.
Oh, is it personnel, that's before the committee hall? I'm sorry, extracurricular?
Is extracurricular really scheduled for five fifteen, get thirteen?
Okay. Any public comment?
I was trying really hard not to do this. Laurel, Reno, three sixty-seven, Buckent Lane. I just wanted to bring up Douglasville, Daniel Boone, for Trump, is a very small community. While you may not know people, people may know you, people may know your business. I just want to be very careful that we don't blame everything that goes on in baseball community on Mr. McCord and Mr. Rayna. I am not involved in baseball. I don't have a baseball player. However, I am aware of the situation that was brought up at the beginning of this meeting, because my child happened to be in school at the same time. It's a small community. We need to be careful on how we blame our coaches for things. We're going to lose our coaches. And I'm a little concerned about something that was stated about, I believe it was said that Coach McCord had to promise not to coach on an outside organization during our baseball season, or even, I believe it was even all calendar year. Our children, and especially the parents, are growing up with travel sports. Parents are expecting that club-level coaching experience. If we're going to tell our coaches that they're not allowed to coach in a travel league, our parents are not going to give the coaching that they feel that their child deserves. Let me put it this way, would you ever not hire a marching band director because they happen to also work for the cadets? It's the same thing. You want the best person out there. I'm not saying travel coaches are the best ones out there, but they do get more experience. More experience does lead, possibly, to better coaching. So I think we need to be careful on limitations that we're putting on our coaches. They're paid a minor stipend, I mean, you're not living off of this, you have to have a full-time job. And if we're going to make it harder and harder for them to try and do what's best for the kids, they may leave us, and then what do we kind of program do we have? And I want the best for the athletes, I want the best for music students, I want the best for the students that don't have a home to go to, between band or sports, maybe it's the fine arts or the arts, whatever it may be. We need to make sure that adults that are working with these kids are supported by our district, and not constantly made to be the bad guy. Because I hear the parents, especially in the athletic world, these older parents of your upper-level high school players aren't ready for the, you've got a lot of travel kids coming up, and those parents expect a lot, because they've been paying a lot, while their kids have been doing elementary and middle school athletics. That's all I'm going to say.
Just to also speak at a personal level, this is where I'm quite, you know, my, my son just wrapped up travel for boys volleyball. And our high school coach is the one that coaches the Red Rose team that my son played on. So travel coach is also, also our high school coach. The key is that we need to make sure, the district needs to make sure that there's a lot of play on that team, but we can't get our team to play that school team. And that's, that's where the problem is.
And I think that was what, this is, I don't know, this is many years in, in the making, Mr. Toreowski and I have been through this a couple times, and it, we don't want, we want to avoid that exact same situation, where the child feels that they have to pay, or the parents feel that they have to pay to be on the traveling team, to guarantee themselves a spot on the Daniel Boone team, you know, or starter for the next.
In fact, my, you know, my son did not play volleyball until last year, and he started on a JV team, did not play club, and he made, he was put on varsity virtually after he was, was, was down to that, he was varsity level. So the coach, you know, evaluated him and put him on varsity without being one of the masters, so.
And I would just really agree. And it has nothing to do with this report, just in general. There are a lot of coaches out there in a lot of schools that are coaching travel teams and coaching high school sports. It's not just our school, it's not just our program. The issue to me is of what you're coaching, it's the, if that was a specific issue that needs to be dealt with, that coaches have as many others for, with the coaches that you have to play here, play there, that's the issue, not whether they're coaching elsewhere. Come on, come on.
Shane, Shane. Shane Cockle, eight thirty, Neigertownburg. I was going to bring up baseball when I was coming up. It was just a promise that he made when he was given a second chance. And all I was asking was that he honored his promise. I don't know, did anyone look at his agreement that he made when he came back? Did anyone see his agreement with Mrs. Porsha? That he made? No one did.
I saw it, Mr. Cock.
Okay. We have one, one person who saw it, but he was given a second chance, and all for second chances. He just had to honor, I'm not, I'm not saying softball, or anything like that. If there was a problem, didn't add sport. And we had one coach who volunteered for free, and he was turned away, wasn't part of the Blue Rocks. And that was, who coaches football?
Coach Marcus, I hate him.
No. Anyway, he was told, trying to do this thing, I don't want to sit down, that's my thing. But he was told they didn't need him, and that was going to be a free coach. They're always begging how they need, they didn't know. The person that I was also rumored trying to get in on board, on coaching staff, I had no one in baseball. But he volunteered. They said no. Baseball side, I was going to come up and ask, with the Apple iPads, is it possible to offer that price to the parents who buy out, when they sign up, and then they, and kids can take it with them when they go to college? Do you figure if you have twenty, thirty percent of the kids who are going to get a reduced price, that that would save the district a ton of money?
I think that was, yeah, was an offer that I heard presented, that when they graduated, there was some buyout number.
It was a dollar.
A dollar.
If you do it upfront, that would save, if, if I got a piece of paper that said, you're getting an eight hundred dollar iPad, you have to pay insurance for thirty-five dollars a year, or we can give it to you at a significant savings of three hundred dollars. And then when your kid graduates, they can take it with you. That would save you a lot of money upfront.
Mr. Cock, well, I'll tell you, that's a great idea, like I said, because I brought it up the last meeting, and the conclusion was that we can't do that per the agreement with these types of companies. They don't allow that. Now I just check into that, to see if there's any way, because these arrangements are negotiable. If we could do that, I mean, it's certainly.
Well, why would, why would you want to pay upfront for something you could wait four years and get it for a dollar?
Because we wouldn't be offering it for a dollar.
If it's thirty, thirty-five dollars a year, why, for four years, you know, if it's a hundred forty dollars.
It's even over the summer, though, right?
The dollar value, the district.
Yeah, I would, I would give it to the parents for a dollar. You know, a whole elementary school that you can give it, you know, you can buy it for a dollar, and you can sit down to the elementary.
It's a great idea, but the problem is, if it breaks, you broke your own.
That's right.
And we have to replace it. So you have to buy another one, lease another one.
Well, I'd like to know, what specifically is the issue? Are we prohibited from doing this, as I heard in the last meeting, by the contract that we have? Or is it some other consideration?
I don't re-
Because other considerations like.
I don't recall this being discussed before. I, I.
Well, why are you looking?
Yeah, how, yeah, that's, can we look into that, Mr. Harris, and see if we get some?
Aren't releasing these iPads?
Yeah.
Before we're releasing them, how can we sell them?
No, so we can't sell them.
Well, they would.
Tell them.
It's a lease.
They would sell them to us for a dollar.
At the end.
We'll, we'll look into that.
Can we buy them at least, so we can see it, so we can make recommendations?
Right, and we'll have to lease up the COW.
Yeah, if there's creativity, and we should have an opportunity for creativity, let's take advantage of it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cock, I'd like to know, I think that's for other.
We'll, we'll look into that.
Can we buy them at least so we can see it, so he can make recommendations?
Right, and we'll have to lease up the COW.
Yeah, if there's creativity, and we should have an opportunity for creativity, let's take it at each other.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cock, I'd like to know, I think that's broken, so.
Okay.
Is he a twin?
No, okay.
Very something, strange truth, you're a township. Get back to this news letter, we called it on seven hours here, about a postseason poll for a paper. And how many times a year is this coming out? Twice.
We would like to, for, be twice a year, maybe.
My, my major concern is, are the students involved in this one?
Yes, they were.
They're, they're definitely involved in putting it out, writing it and everything.
They were involved, yes.
Okay. Now looking at that, says iPad, you're having parents out there pay the taxes, send their students to school. Now I didn't tell them if they want to learn anything, they're going to have to pay for iPad. Where is that audacity coming from? I mean, really, I mean, to me, because I did that at one point, but I paid for five students to get educated. But now, you can get educated unless I pay $35 extra for this extra incentive. Something's going down there, people.
Well, that's only for the.
You better start realizing.
That's only for the insurance, they don't have to get a tax.
People are going to be saying, wait a minute, I'm paying taxes for my students to go to school. Now you're telling me they're not going to get educated if I don't pay for this insurance or for this? And that's not right.
But if they lose their, if they lose their textbook, it's this, it's, Mr. McKnight had mentioned that the cost is almost the same to replace a textbook that a student would lose versus if they damage and destroy their iPad. So really, I mean, has the district not, you know, for those.
If they lose it though, if they lose it, they'll have to pay. But if they don't pay, they don't get educated.
No.
No, that's not right. It, it's, it's an option to buy the insurance, they can opt out if not. And if they damage them, they'll go on the books for more than $35. It's like insurance.
But if they damage it, it's going to be a lot more than the textbook.
Not really, no, textbooks are, they go better losing to.
I mean, there's all seven textbooks, but they, they, I'm still saying, you're putting a heck of a burden on these parents. If you're going to get that, but they're not going to throw their textbooks all the way.
A student can get the iPad and not ever pay attention. They just have it and the material's on it just as if it is now. So, but they, as a parent, I know my voice, I would pay the $35 because they're going to break it.
My son too.
If something happens to that iPad, you're telling your parent, hey, you just paid for the entire year's books. Not just one that he lost, you just paid for the entire.
His point is, you're just a parent, it's like.
Yes. I'd rather pay for one book because my child lost than what, what I pay for a locker and everything is a world.
Is there any other public comment?
Was this just public comment under old business? I mean, it kind of worked in public comment as a whole.
Just public comment as the end of the meeting.
All right, well, that's, is all through your turn.
Second.